Okay, we're gonna get started here. Um, Dr. Zuniga, if you could take role?
Yeah, good afternoon everyone. Member Ricardo Padilla?
Here.
Member Florencio Briones?
Present.
Member David Diaz?
Here.
Uh, member Salazar de Sequeiro will not be with us. She is up north working with the young ladies for Girl State and has evening duties as well. So she apologized, but she did inform us as well. And, uh, member Carlos Alcedo?
Present.
Thank you.
And Ligo, if you could take us into closed session?
Thank you. Closed session. Items are as follows. Item A is pursuant to government code section 54957b1, public employment assistant principal. Item B is pursuant to government code section 54957b1, public employment English language coordinator. Item C is pursuant to government code section 54957, public employee discipline dismissal release, three matters. Item D is pursuant to government code section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUEA. Item E is pursuant to government code section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUEA adult ed. And item F is pursuant to government code section 54957.6, labor negotiations for CSCA chapter 11. Are there any public comments?
No comments for closed session right now.
Yeah, we, with that, we'll move into closed session.
Good evening, everyone. Buenos dias a todos. Board member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Member Polenio Briones.
Present.
Board member David Diaz.
Here.
Board member Salat Torges Siguris is not with us this evening. She is up north attending a girl's state conference with our students there. And she has evening duty, so she apologized for not being here. But she is with some students up north. And then finally, board member Carlos Salcedo.
Present.
Thank you.
So now we move to flag salute. So if everyone can please stand. And Mr. Marquez, if you would lead us all in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I chose you because you had the biggest smile on your face. I don't know why. So. Anyway, thank you for that, Mr. Marquez. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here we none, so move. Move to public comments. Any public comments, Dr. Zuniga?
No public comment.
No? Thank you. So now we go to recognition of district parent volunteer of the year. And each school's parent volunteer.
This is Salcedo just to, I'm sorry, there's a number five communication from the union reps. But I believe none of them are here this evening, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that on the agenda.
Traditionally, we don't have them on the second meeting, but this is a special meeting.
That's why I jumped straight to the recognition.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Zuniga.
Okay. So now we are in section. Give me one second.
C1.
Recognition.
Okay, here we go. Trying to open my agenda. Wow, my apologies.
Volunteer of the year.
Yep, got it right here. Okay, my apologies. I had the June 15th agenda on there. As you know, that on an annual basis, we recognize individuals that are stakeholders to our community. We have our classified employer of the year that was announced recently. We also have our teacher of the year that will be officially announced at the start of the school year. And finally, we save the best for last. We have the parent, parents of the year. We recognize one parent of the year from each one of our high schools as well as a district parent of the year. All of you are equal and all of you are outstanding. And what we've done to do is opportunities for schools to highlight their parents and try to rotate as much as we can to also honor the district parent of the year as well. So you have high praise from not only your site administration and your site supporters, but as well as the school district and our board of trustees. And that's why it's important that part of our, part of our goal and our, even in our ALCAP plan and one of our state priorities is to ensure that parents feel comfortable coming onto campus, parents are engaged, parents contribute to the responsibilities in growing a child and also supporting students, especially at a high school. We all know that when elementary school starts, we walk our kids to campus. We want to be there with them. We want to show up and, and support them. As they become a little older and they get into high school, you start seeing, some of them have beards, you know, and, you know, we have kids going through puberty. And those kids sometimes don't want parents, right? And they were like, Mom, drop me off down the street. That's what I used to do. Like, Mom, I used to walk so I don't have to get dropped up on my parents. Not that I only, that I live far. But nevertheless, I think we saw the, the challenges as a high school district as about how to engage parents more onto a high school setting, which we are, you know, all responsible for here, is operations of those high school program to ensure that there's growth and there's more involvement in parents. Not that, you know, high school students are growing independently, they still are kids. And, and though they look a little older, they still need their moms or dads and their guardians. And most importantly, contributing to the school environment as parents is invaluable to any school district, especially El Monte Union High School District too. So I congratulate you. And I also want to make sure that we have a representative from each of the schools here, which is a school administrator, that will be recognizing you, your contributions to your school as a parent. There are no particular qualifications, but I highlight a couple of things. The involvement, the, the opportunities that you have taken on and also not only service your own child on campus, but service all the students on campus. And that's really outstanding when you have parents that not only care for their kid, they care about the school community, meaning all of our students too. So again, congratulations. I will now have the privilege of having one at a time. And we're going to start off with Arroyo High School. And we will have our principal, Mr. Flores, introduce the Arroyo High School parent of the year.
Oh, okay. Good evening, members of the board, district staff, and everybody here in attendance today. I am honored to share a little bit of information about Jessica Schoenfeld, who is our parent of the year. So I want to give her a round of applause for this. For more. For those of you that don't know, I know that Mr. Cecil is a band parent here, but anybody that knows about band and specifically about Arroyo's band is, it's huge. We have a lot, we have almost 200 band members. And there's a lot of responsibility involved with taking care of those, those students and making sure that they receive everything that they need. And Ms. Schoenfeld has done that. She was our booster president last year and just did a phenomenal job, especially during the difficult year that we had, trophy after trophy, championship after championship. She, she played a huge role in making sure that we had success with our students again after coming back from, from a difficult 18 months. I do have some information that I want to share with you, a little read up that includes some, some quotes from the current president from our booster as well as Mr. Masaro, our current band director. Ms. Schoenfeld has been actively involved in band for several years now. Recently, she took on the role as president of her band booster. And as president, she ran booster meetings and made sure each VP for color guard, drum light, and orchestra had everything they needed to be successful. She also made sure that budgets were approved so that items could be purchased on time. Recently, I reached out to our new booster president, and this is what Ms. Connie Garcia had to say. Jessica has been a parent volunteer for almost 20 years, helping with PTSA as well as band. She works a full-time job and still manages to help our school. She is great at organizing any projects for band and color guard and does an amazing job balancing her duties as a first-year teacher and fulfilling her duties as a band booster president. Our band director, Mr. Masaro, had this to say about Jessica. She is the mistress of protocol. She made sure everything was taken care of, and she led the program through the most successful season to date. I've always felt she's had my back and has supported my vision of what this program can become. Jessica, we are truly blessed and lucky to have you at Arroyo High School, supporting hundreds of students daily and all day on Saturdays as well. We know how long those days are. On Saturday events, thank you for all of your help and support, and congratulations. Can we have her come on up? Can we have her come up?
We could have Ms. Schoenfeld come up. And we have our, our board president, who also has certificates for you. But we'd like, we'd love for you to maybe just introduce your family who's here this evening with us, if you don't mind. If you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to say a few words.
No problem. Thank you to all the board members, everybody here. It's been a pleasure and an honor working with every single one of you and supporting our students because as Mr. Flores wonderfully said, it's not just my kids, it's all the kids in the school district that are important to me. But of course, we have the most important two of them of my four. I have my daughter Michaela, who is still at Arroyo and in band, so I've got three more years as a band parent. Michaela, wave. I have my son Aiden, who just finished four years in band and basketball. And they're my reason, obviously, my main first reason, but every other student in the district obviously is, is almost as important as my own children. I have two other students who did graduate in the district already, so also part of the band program, so my heart's been there. And then, of course, without my wonderful partner's support, never be able to do all the things that I do. Mr. Trevor Schoenfeld, also a teacher in our district. About 15 years ago, I think, we moved here and fell in love with this community. And I've been so honored to be a part of it and to find such a wonderful group of people to work with and support all these kids. So thank you very much for being the community you guys all are. And this guy, this guy.
Well, you know, I've, I've known Mrs. Schoenfeld for, hold on a minute.
About 15 years.
Quite a while. And as a parent volunteer at Dirfi. So it's just, it, it just, and, and I'll make my, my, my comments to everybody, it's just, it, somebody who volunteers does it genuinely. And I, as, as a principal, whenever I hold parent meetings and we talk about volunteers, that is one of the best ways to make sure that your child succeeds, being involved in the school. Everybody knows that, but it takes a great effort to actually do it, you know? And, you know, I mean, I mean, I don't know how Michaela feels or, you know, I mean, mom has been there since kindergarten, right?
I heard too much.
You know, so, but we look at all the Schoenfeld kids and see how well they turned out. So, I mean, it's, it's mom, it's dad, it's, it's everybody, right? But definitely being a part of the, of the system makes a big, big difference, right? So, Mrs. Schoenfeld, this is just a certificate of recognition for being selected as a 2021, 2022 Arroyo High School Parent Volunteer of the Year and for your countless hours of time and dedication to the success of the students of this school. So congratulations to the El Monte Union High School District Board of Trustees.
Thanks.
I was gonna say, you want to invite the, the, the little ones up? The Joe.
The Joe.
Mr. Flores.
Mr. Flores, hit.
Down he goes.
Down.
One, two, three, yay!
Sure.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Flores? Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next will be Almani Michael, with Mr. Joe Booth, my assistant. We are starting, Almani Michael.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Good evening, school board members, district administrators. El Monte High School elect to recognize Mrs. Clara Acosta as El Monte High School Parent of the Year. She's, she's been involved since, you know, her children have entered El Monte City School District. She's been involved here at El Monte High School for the past six years, putting two wonderful kids through our school. She served in different capacities for the El Monte City School District and of course in our district as well. She served on our LPAC, she served on LPAC, she served on school site council. She attended various workshops, you know, never missing one, often providing input to our school. And also, she's the mother of our ASB president, so I present to you, Ms. Clara Acosta.
Muchisimas gracias por este reconocimiento. La verdad, no lo esperaba. Gracias. Igual como dijo la anterior maestra, el madre de familia. También, yo estuve involucrada desde que mis niñas estaban en Hester. Empecé a estar ahí apoyándolas y en todo lo que podía ayudar a las maestras. Después ya estuve en ELAC, en DILAC, en PTA. También estuvimos en la escuela del Monte, apoyando y tratando de hacerlo mejor para nuestros estudiantes, no solo por mis hijas. Porque siempre he creído para que una comunidad sea realmente buena tenemos que trabajar para todos los jóvenes. Así es que siempre he tratado de que todos los padres estemos involucrados en la vida de nuestros hijos, tanto en casa como en la escuela. Así es que gracias, gracias por este reconocimiento. Pues bendecida, ¿verdad?, de que mis niñas, una está en la Universidad de Santa Bárbara y la otra se me va a Georgetown. Y súper contenta de todo lo que hemos logrado juntas. Gracias.
Y aquí también un su certificado para ser.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna now highlight some roads to the high school. Unfortunately, our parents are nine weeks old ten today with a conflict of family schedules. With Miss Penalora, our assistant principal, would love to highlight the accomplishments. And I say big because it's a mother and father. They're coming out of combination. They couldn't do one or the other. They hadn't wanted to. So we're okay with that? Are we gonna highlight that road?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Zuniga, esteemed board members, and all of our, all who are present here today. It's exactly right, they are the dynamic duo of parent volunteerism at Rosemead. So I wanted to recognize, it's my honor to recognize Diane and John Benitez as our Rosemead High School's Parents, Parent Volunteers of the Year. As I've said, they are a dynamic duo, they're always together, they volunteer for just about every single thing we do on our campus. And we couldn't do half of the things without the parents coming to support every single part of what we do for our kids. So we're very, very honored to recognize them. They, we rely heavily on the Benitez team, so I just want to tell you that. They run our concession stand along with the rest of the PTSA members. I love talking football to Mr. Benitez, I'm just, we talk about coaching and games, et cetera. But to give you an idea of their volunteerism, they are school site council members. They've been on the modernization planning committee for our school. They are PTSA members and board members of our PTSA. They are always seen at our school dances, they are chaperones, they run our coat check. And so we're very happy to have them there, extra eyes on everything, we love that. And they've been special counsel to our administration, regular members of just about everything that we do, and also our school site safety committee. So I do want to say that Rosemead High School has benefited greatly from their service, and it's definitely my pleasure to recognize them and to thank them and to thank all of our parents, so thank you.
Up next, we're going to introduce Almani High School. We have the Golden Open, where our principal, Paul, will be highlighting our Parents of the Year.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. It's an honor for me to be here today to recognize one of our parents. Ms. Melina Flores is here with his mother, with her mother. Ms. Melina Flores has been a valuable parent and partner of the South Almonte community since 2014, when she first enrolled her oldest son, who is now at the university. She has then enrolled two more students in our school, and they've all graduated now. She's a proud parent of three graduates who are doing extremely well. One is working currently on an internship in Oregon State, so very proud of him. During this time, Ms. Melina has continued to work tirelessly as a student advocate and parent advocate by being an active member of the ELAC, English Learner Advisory Committee, the DILAC Committee, the District English Learner Advisory Committee, the Seek to Achieve Parents Scholarship Committee, and the South Almonte High School PTSA Committee. Ms. Melina Flores has worked hard to raise funds for student scholarships, field trip opportunities, athletic equipment, staff and student recognition events, and much more. Her leadership qualities and tireless dedication has served as a role model for other parents to follow. Her gentle, positive, bubbly personality is infectious, and she motivates other parents in school communities to get involved and to work for the benefit of all students. South Almonte High School is proud to have Ms. Melina Flores as a loyal parent partner in education, and we have the honor to recognize her as the South Almonte High School Parent Volunteer of the Year. Venga, señora. Para reconocer a usted también. I'm just gonna say it in Spanish really quickly. Queremos, la escuela de Sur El Monte High School quiere reconocer a una persona muy importante para nosotros en la comunidad de la escuela. Desde 2014, cuando ella inscribió a su primer hijo, ha trabajado muy duro para que todos los niños de la escuela de Sur El Monte tengan los servicios necesarios y que tengan oportunidades y los fondos necesarios para continuar su educación en el colegio. La señora Flores es miembro del ELAC Committee, del DILAC Committee, Seek to Achieve Parents Scholarship Committee, y South Almonte High School PTSA Committee. La señora Flores ha trabajado muy, muy duro para que los niños tengan oportunidades para ir a recreos, para ir a tener eventos donde se reconocen especialmente a los niños y a los miembros de la facultad. Y también ha estado trabajando desde las cuatro de la mañana hasta las cinco de la tarde en nuestro swap meet de la Sur El Monte High School para proveer fondos para los niños. Este año dieron, el comité de PTSA dio 32 mil dólares en scholarships a los niños de Sur El Monte. Gracias a ellos. Thank you very much.
So she too, congratulations to Ms. Melina Flores, felicidades, padre Melina Flores. También tenemos un certificado de reconocimiento. We have a certificate of recognition, just like all of our awardees tonight. Igual como todos los que estamos reconociendo, los otros padres. Dice así, Melina Flores, Sur El Monte, for being selected as the 2021-2022 South Almonte High School Parent Volunteer of the Year and for your countless hours of time and dedication to the success of the students and school. Dice, felicidades por ser reconocida como padre voluntaria del año para el año 2021-2022 en la preparatoria de Sur El Monte por sus miles horas de tiempo y dedicación para el éxito de los estudiantes y la escuela. Felicidades de parte de todas mis colegas, los miembros de la mesa directiva. And I'll end with this, congratulations to all of the awardees tonight. Parents will always judge themselves by the way their kids turn out. Los padres siempre se miden según cómo salen sus hijos. Y basado en lo que escuchamos esta noche, son unos padres fenomenales. Based on what we heard tonight about the things that your children are doing, you guys are phenomenal parents. So thank you for the time and dedication that you give, not only to your children, but also to the rest of the children of the Almonte City School District. Congratulations to all of our awardees.
Buenas tardes a todos y muchas gracias por el reconocimiento. Tampoco lo esperaba como las demás mamis. Este, yo les agradezco mucho y la verdad es un placer y es este muy gratificante el ayudar a los muchachos porque como decía la mami anterior, este, una comunidad que se preocupa por todos los muchachos, no solamente por los propios, es bueno porque así también nuestros propios hijos crecen en una comunidad sana, en una comunidad fructífera, en una comunidad más habitable. O sea, todos tenemos que preocuparnos por todos, no solamente por los propios. Gracias. Y me faltó presentarles a mi mamá, que gracias a ella, yo también soy muy metiche en la escuela porque ella también era metiche cuando yo era pequeña.
I want to recognize this gentleman here, he'll be retiring, and he's still here and he's still working. So I want to congratulate him, he came out of his way to come out here this evening to support the Mountain View High School Parent of the Year. Mr. Marquez will depart July 30, 29th? 29th, because that's actually a Friday, right? So he's gonna hang with us for a couple of weeks. And I also wanted to recognize him because normally every year we do what we call Administrator's Association, the local association that we recognize, it's called, you know, the Golden Apple Awards. And unfortunately, because of COVID, we haven't been able to do that. But I have the fortunate thing to do this today and have the recognition here. So I want to present that to you now, if you don't mind. And if I could just highlight real quick what it is? Since I don't get hit with it with my watch. I think they're the Golden Apple, but we get a golden belt. But you are golden, Mr. Marquez. Jose Marquez, Almonte High School District, June 30th, 2022. And that is officially the end of this month, and we'll keep him up for more months, so. Whenever you need lunch or dinner, you can wave that at home and hopefully you get some lunch or dinner, right? I don't know about, I'm not sure if your wife will buy that, but you also have your podium where displayed that as well. That's actually where you stand on there, okay? So 40 years of service, congratulations, well deserved, outstanding. And now I hand it over to you.
Really appreciate it. Well, as I write slowly into the sunset, I am so, so excited to be here and just recognize our Parent of the Year. And, you know, I just moved, a lot of things are going on in my life, but I couldn't miss this. I was looking forward to this because I truly, truly believe that parents, you know, our job is support our parents and our job is support our kids. And so we chose Roxana De La Luz for many reasons. She is a product of our high school, she's a graduate of a royal high school. Yeah, so, and she has two children right now attending Mountain View High School. She has Ephraim, who will be a sophomore this coming year, and Jeremiah will be a senior this year. She's married to Jose Luis, she's been married for 18 years, together for 22. The De La Luz family attends Iglesia Podderoso, Gigante Church, where Mr. De La Luz is a Sunday school teacher, and where her son plays bass in the church band. She has also been a parent, a member of the parent council at Crans for four years and at Parkview Elementary for another three. Mr. De La Luz also has been a parent volunteer for our Viking football program. Oh, sorry, there you go. Everyone can see me, not good. She's participated in many of our activities at home, at school. She's earned many various achievement certificates for completing her academies she's participated in. She's been recognized as one of our parent volunteers at our district's recognition luncheon. She was part of our PTSA School Site Council and has attended the vast majority of our monthly coffee with the principal meetings. Most recently, she was a very active member, she was a very active engaged member of our bell schedule committee. She totally, totally understands the effects of a double conference schedule and how it affects her kids. She's an extraordinary bright person, she's a dedicated parent, wife, and an active member of the Mountain View High School community. And it is for this and the reasons I mentioned earlier that I would like to introduce to you Roxana De La Luz as this year's Almonte Union High School District of the Year. You know, and I've also asked Ms. Bimentel, our community liaison, come on up, Ms. Bimentel, to be with us too.
Buenas tardes, good afternoon, I just wanted to, I'm so nervous, but I'm so happy. And I, like I told them, I don't deserve this, but I really appreciate it, thank you very much. But I want to read this that I found today, it says, "Do not go where the path may lead. Go instead where there is no path and leave a trail." I'm gonna translate it in Spanish. No camines por donde está el camino, sino donde no hay un camino y deja tus huellas. Entonces, es muy importante, ¿verdad? Le doy gracias a Dios primeramente, a mi familia, este, porque como padres tenemos que dejar una huella a nuestros hijos. Yo soy activa en la iglesia y también la palabra de Dios dice que herencia de Jehová son los hijos. Nuestros hijos son una herencia, ¿verdad? No monetariamente como dinero. Our sons, our daughters, they're a heritage, and we have to leave something in them. So when I serve the schools, I'm serving my kids and I'm serving the community too. So also, I grew up here, I think I came here in 1995, and I came to school here too. So it's like a family, you know, you remember when you're growing up and everything. Yo crecí aquí, llegué aquí al Monte, tengo 26 años en el Monte, y este también estuve trabajando como 15 años en la comunidad del Monte, Scott District, con el señor Fadía y me da mucho gusto de verlo también. Y este, y también este, el trabajar en las escuelas y el trabajar con, en la comunidad nos impulsa a ayudar a otras personas, ¿verdad? Como decía la mamá, ¿verdad? Queremos que nuestros hijos crezcan en una comunidad segura y que el ambiente esté bien. Entonces, cómo podemos hacer eso es ser voluntarios, ¿verdad? A veces unos trabajan, otros no, pero damos gracias a Dios. Le doy gracias a Dios por darme esta oportunidad de poder, este, tengo siete años sin trabajar de un salario, pero estoy siendo voluntaria y eso es algo satisfactorio. So le doy gracias, thank you so much. Right here is my husband, Jose Luis, mi esposo. Este, Ephraim De La Luz, mi hijo, y mi hijo Jeremiah, mi hermana Brenda, y mi cuñado Cristian. Y le doy gracias a ellos por venir, este, y por todos ustedes, muchas gracias. Y le doy gracias a ellos por venir, este, y por todos ustedes. Muchas gracias.
Take some pictures.
Yes, so como me gustaría tener cinco de estos trofeos. I would so much love to have five of these plaques, right? Because I think that honestly, all of our parents here or everyone who volunteers at our schools, they're saints. They are, they're just there for our kids, for our students, and they have nothing but goodwill for our schools. So I just want to present this to Ms. De La Luz, this plaque. Husband, you might want to. Might need some help or, there you go. Come on, boys. Come on up. And, and just let me read, just the certificate of recognition presented to Roxana De La Luz from Mountain View High School for being selected as the 2021, 2022 Almonte Union High School District Parent Volunteer of the Year and for your countless hours of time and dedication to the success of our students and school. So we want to congratulate you for all of the hours, trust me, countless, and for probably a few more years too, right? So. So we want to hand this over to you and we have some, we have some more gifts, right? We have flowers. Yeah, there we go, boys. All right. Anybody else? I just want to congratulate Roxana. I had the privilege of working with her. My day job is with Elmonte City School District, but I had the privilege of working with Roxana for many years. She was the supervisor to our after-school Stone Soup program. She was such, always such a caring person, helping kids with homework after school, enrichment programs after school, and just created a quality place for kids to attend. But it all starts with the leadership, always an amazing person. Voy a hablar en español. Trabajé con Roxana por varios años en el distrito escolar de la ciudad del Monte y ella era la supervisora para el programa de Stone Soup, donde ayudaba a muchos estudiantes con la tarea y hacía actividades de enriquecimiento y siempre se aseguraba de que hubiera, de que habiera un ambiente muy bueno para todos nuestros estudiantes. Entonces, no me sorprende que hoy la estamos reconociendo hoy como el padre del año. So it does not surprise me that she's receiving this, this recognition. So proud of you, so proud of your husband and, and your children. They're so big, you know? I, I know that I'm old. Ya sé que yo soy vieja, so I have no hair over here. I used to have hair, right? All right, felicidades. She agreed. Yes. The plaque that's being held there by Ms. De La Luz will also be displayed at our district office for the entire year until next year and we'll have another Parent Volunteer of the Year. Congratulations to all of our parents for this evening. Mr. Marquez, yes, but this concludes our presentation. We'll take a five-minute recess break. You're welcome to stay here, but you don't have to. You know, treat, let's treat our parents to dinner or kids or somewhere. Let's get them out. So congratulations, everyone, and thank you again. You have a wonderful evening. Okay. Coming back from our short break, again, just congratulations to all of our Parent Volunteers of the Year. We really couldn't do it without them, so I really appreciate all of their support, year in and year out. With that, we now move on to presentation on the Almonte Union High School District Local Indicators.
Yes, President Soseito, we have Edith Cheveria, our director, who is overseeing not only LCAP but also has, I don't want to say honor or privilege, but the actual responsibilities to ensure that we are accountable for our plan and also feature the district local indicators as well. So appreciate Ms. Edith Cheveria, Director of Assessment Accountability and Family Engagement, for being here this evening and working alongside Mr. Ciso and in preparation for this presentation. As you know, this is a requirement to have this and ensure that the board understands the local indicators that we have as well. So I'm not sure, Mr. Ciso, you want to highlight anything before Ms. Edith Cheveria gets started?
Yeah, you know what, and as I did the LCAP update last week and, and this Cheveria is doing this presentation today. It's been a lot, this is one of, like, we call it a, I guess they call it a plandemic this year, all the plans we've done. And, but we have a lot of work we're doing preparing for next school year. Kind of excited about things, you know, kind of hope to get some enormity next year. But we have a lot of plans in place and, and continue the planning. So I really appreciate all the work that Edith's done this year. It's been a tremendous year towards progressing and coming back some normacy for hopefully this coming year. So, Edith, go ahead.
Good evening. It's nice to be here. Actually, part of my job is promoting parent and family engagement. So it was very nice to see the parents here being honored. That's actually the fun part of my job. It's very exciting to work with them. So, but today I get to present an accountability update on our local indicators. This is a requirement to be presented annually with the adoption of the LCAP and it's a result of LCFF, the Local Control Funding Formula, that was implemented, I think, in 2013. Oh my God, almost ten years ago. So as a result of LCFF, a few things happened. We were able to receive supplemental concentration funds and we had to create and continually revise the LCAP or the Local Control and Accountability Plan. And we are accountable to eleven state measures that are referred to as indicators. So there's six state measures, five local measures. The state measures are compiled through CalPads data. So those are all shown with a gauge in the dashboard and those are directly derived from the CalPads data that submitted. The local indicators are what we have to self-report to the state every year and that's what you're going to hear today. So if you're familiar with the dashboard, this is what it looks like in real time when we have data for all of the indicators. This is in 2019 when we last had all of the data. You have, the ones with the gauge are the ones that are state indicators. They are represented with a different color. And the ones I'm presenting today are the last five, which are your local indicators that are defined as met, not met, or not met for two or more years. This is what it looked like in 2019. This is what it looks like in 2021 because we haven't self-reported the data. And notice there is no, there are no gauges for state accountability because that was suspended as a result of the CAS, the ESPEC being suspended last year. So, local indicators, again, we have to report them and they will show up in the dashboard and the CD will determine if we, what we report is going to meet or not meet or not meet that indicator for two or more years. So far, we've met them every year. So the local indicators, the first one defines, is defined by basic conditions and this one is going to change to align with federal guidelines, but that data is embargoed and I can't share it. So what I'm sharing is what we've shared in the past, which is if we have teachers misassigned or vacant positions, we have to report it. If our students have access to their own copies of standard lines instruction materials and our, our school facilities in good repair. So we've met all of these indicators and these are reported on the school accountability report cards. The second priority or the second indicator is implementation of academic standards. So we continue to provide all of our students with access to the academic standards. We actually started going back on the adoption, adoption cycle of our curriculum. So we adopted the ELA curriculum in the spring and we're looking at adopting the science one this coming year. And with it also comes a lot of professional development for our teachers. Parent and family engagement. I enjoy working with our community liaisons and ensuring that we survey parents, we meet with them. We always ask them, "What works best for you when it comes to workshops and what workshops do you want to see?" And so this past year, we were able to offer both in-person and virtual workshops. For workshops that were offered virtually, parents had the opportunity to actually check out Chromebooks so that they can have access to them at home. We don't want them to be borrowing the one from their kids. We want to make sure that they have their own. So that took place this last year. We've also had, continued to offer workshops that promote leadership training to our school site council and our DLEC or District English Learner Advisory Committee. We're looking at diversifying. Every time that we meet with parents, they always provide input on what has worked or what they would like to see. So we are looking at expanding our offerings next year based on the recommendations that they're providing. School climate, we do have to ask our students, do they feel safe on campus? And what we have is a comparison from 2020 to 2022, which the kids actually, the same percent of kids stated that they felt safe on campus, which was interesting because they weren't on campus in 2021. So we did the last time they were on campus in 2020 and this year. And then of course access, all of our kids have access to all of their graduation requirements and more, including CTE, performing arts, visual and performing arts. And it's not just at Swan School, they have access to it at all of our schools. So what's next? We do have to submit this data once the state releases or gives us access to input them in the dashboard directly and that will come in late August, September. And then the CD will identify if we've met all of the indicators and that will be released with the 2022 dashboard. And that's the presentation on local indicators.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Padilla?
None for me.
Mr. Burina?
None for me. Thank you, Mrs. Cheveria.
Thank you, Ms. Chiviria.
Mr. Diaz?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Edith.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Dr. Zuniga, superintendent announcements?
Yes, just the two announcements this evening, President Salsedo. Number one, as we go dark in July and getting ready for the start of the school year, two dates in mind come. Opening of school program will be the 15th of August, and I'm hoping or wondering if any of you will be available. We'd love to have you as part of our opening of school program. Most likely, it'll be, take place at Rosemead High School to not only highlight the new stadium, but we also know that with COVID, it's probably ideal to have it outdoors again. Last year, we had it at Royal High School. This year, we were hoping to have it at Rosemead last year, but it was, the project wasn't done. So now that it's all done and said, we want to highlight that and kind of get a glimpse at it, but nobody else has seen from other schools possibly, the new stadium on campus as well. So we'd love to have you there. I know some of you guys have obligations with work, but that will be on the 15th of August, and we'll start putting, I'm not sure if, we have the date on there on the calendar for next year already, on their weekly memos yet? Not yet, right? We'll add it on there if it's not on there. The next one is the 20th of August. That is a Saturday. That is a retreat scheduled for the board and administration. I will be working with President Salsedo on ensuring that whatever the board would like to have input on, to put on the agenda. We want to be proactive in preparing for that retreat as well. I did take notes a couple of months ago when we had a couple of things that we discussed about something that we want to feature, but also work with the president to make sure that we cover enough information. The only thing I do, I ask if there's any information you'd like to share individually as a board member, that just reach out to me, and then I'll contact President Salsedo on that too. So please keep that in mind. I'll reach out to you in July as we prepare individually, just have a chat and see what you guys have for that retreat, okay? But we have a full agenda. I mean, there's so many things that we can cover. We want to be proactive in making sure that we also cover what the board expresses to have for the next year. And that's it, President Salsedo.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. So now we move on to consent agenda. Any questions, Mr. Padilla? Any items?
No, move to approve the consent agenda.
Any questions, Mr. Bionis?
No.
Mr. Diaz? Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Okay, so now we move to the regular agenda, and the first item is consider approval of the Almane Union High School District Local Control and Accountability Plan, the LCAP, for 2022 and 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Next up is consider approval of estimated actuals for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year and approve, and approval of the proposed budget for 2022, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved.
Can I make a comment on that one?
Yes, sir.
I would like to get from Mr. Cecil or from Mr. Elatar. You know, we talked about the divisor of 29.5, but then we talked about how we get very creative, and I would like like a one-pager of what we're paying for what, that whole discussion we had on one page, and then on the bottom, come out with that we're overstaffed by 6.5, whatever it may be. But I want to see how creative you've gotten, so put it in real understandable terms so we, the board, can understand it. You know, are you, am I making sense or not? All right, that's it.
In memo form?
In memo form. I want like five pages, six pages. I want one page. Just tell me, you know, through these funds, we're able to come up with this number.
Staffing ratio.
Say that? The staffing ratio, there you go.
Okay. And so you want the budget that covers them? How much of the budget goes towards that?
Right.
Because we could, we already, I do the, where the funding source comes from, how many teachers are covered.
Right, and if you want to break it down by Rosemead, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Even better.
I got it.
Excellent. Okay. Number three, consider approval of contract agreement between the Almane Union High School District and RICO USA to provide imaging and conversion services.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Four is consider approval of docuWare document management services.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Five, consider approval of Resolution 57-21/22 to withdraw membership from the CSRM Joint Powers Authority and declare membership with Southern California Regional Liability Access Fund, Joint Powers Authority, and approval of the necessary items to contract with Keenan and Associates as the district's property and liability claims administrator, and approve the JPA bylaws and agreement.
Move to approve for discussion.
Second.
Second, okay, discussion?
Mr. Elatar, with the approval of this item tonight, does this new coverage, would this address the issue that we were experiencing with utilizing parks through LA, the LA County Department of Parks and Rec?
Yes, the relief is, JBA is not self-insured, so many school districts around us or part of the relief, JBA, are able to submit certificate of insurance endorsement to the county than was accepted by the county for, so we will be doing the same.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved.
Yeah, just quick comment on this. So had we stayed with this contractor, with this organization, it would have cost us $850,000 more this year, correct or incorrect?
If we stayed with ISKIP, it would cost us over $275,000 more than this, than joining relief JBA. Since ISKIP declined to provide insurance for the collective merge membership, we would have to individually insure with ISKIP and accept their final quote, which was significantly higher than what we're paying this year. Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Moving on to number six, consider approval of Resolution Number 58-21/22 approving absence of board member from previous Board of Trustees meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention? I'll abstain. Passes 301. Number seven, consider approval of Resolution 59-21/22 for the use of education protection account funds in the school year 2022, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Consider approval of Resolution Number 60-21/22, committing funds to meet statutory requirements, financial obligations, and maintain fiscal solvency.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number nine is consider approval of Resolution 61-21/22 for annual delegation of administrative authority to process routine budget revisions, adjustments, and transfers for 2022, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number 10 is consider approval of startup bonus for newly hired bus drivers, fours, and vehicle mechanic classified employees.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. And now move to roundtable. So topics, issues to be brought forward for future agenda items, Mr. Padilla?
I just want to, before I leave my mind, I wanted to tell Dr. Zuniga that when we have our retreat, I really would like to look at the results from the student surveys that we did from Youth Truth, just so that we can make sure that we let our principals and our administration know and show our kids that we don't just take the surveys, that we really value what they have to say and that we will make decisions around that, and that, you know, they are our number one customer, and those surveys are very telling of, you know, the type of schools that they want to attend and the types of programs that they want to have, and the type of teachers that they want to have and how they want to be treated. So I just want to make sure that that makes it on there. Then the other thing was that I did have the opportunity to attend Naleo, I don't know if there's a, yeah, I did attend Naleo, the National Association of Latino, Latino elected officials and appointed officials, and they had some really good sessions on how to take care of yourself, and I attended sessions on ESER and all the different things that you could do to spend the ESER fund in the elementary and secondary education relief fund. Went to two sessions of that, and it was really nice to see that, you know, we're kind, all over the nation, we're all spending it in similar, similar things. But probably my biggest takeaway was to take care of self. If you don't take care of self, then you can't take care of, you know, your constituents, your students, or your staff, if you're a principal, or if you're superintendent. And so it was really nice to see other Latinos like myself in positions of power that create policy and shape education and run cities, and it was pretty motivational for me in seeing other people that, similar dunks and understanding. So I just want to thank the district for allowing me to do that, and, you know, when we go there, we are using the public's money, and I'm very conscientious of that. And when I go there, I always make sure to come back and bring something that I can share. And I didn't bring it with me today, but I'm going to share it, and it's a, I attended one session on taking care of self, and it's a little graph on creating a plan to better take care of yourself. It has an assessment piece, and they show you a model of one that's already filled out for you so that you could do it for yourself when you decide to make time for that. So enjoyed hanging out with Dr. Zuniga in a less formal setting than this, you know, and, but make no mistake, we were there working, taking care of business for our school district and for our children, and had a very pleasant time. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Bionis?
Just one request to Mr. Cecil. When AP results are made public or become available, if you could provide a breakdown in a Friday memo? That's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Diaz?
None for me.
The only thing I had just to share, and it was just in conversation with Mr. Diaz, actually, was if we could provide, when we do recognition, we often recognize parents who only speak, or speak languages other than English. So whether it be Spanish or Vietnamese, or Chinese, or, I'm sorry, Mandarin, or, if we can provide these certificates also in their language, I think that would, I think mean a little bit more. So, and that's all I have. Okay?
Mr. Salsedo, you know, I don't know why we've overlooked it, as we continue to have the whole discussion on access and equity and, you know, bringing everybody to the table, and it's definitely important to be able to read a certificate that you get in your own language. So I think that's a great point that you make.
Okay, and I believe that is it. Ligo, if you can share out from closed session?
Yes, thank you. For item A, the board approved Steve Ortiz as the Assistant Principal by a vote of 4-0. Board member Torres de Seegres was not present in closed session. For item B, the board approved Linda Rosales as the English Learner Coordinator by a vote of 4-0. Board member Torres de Seegres was not present in closed session. For item C, direction was given, no action was taken on all three matters. And for items D, E, and F, no action was taken.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we adjourn this meeting. Have a good evening.